Alrighty. Good afternoon, everyone, and over to you Chair Harrington.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners, work session with the Washington County Mayors. Clerk Moss, could you take roll call, please?
Okay, we'll start with the board and then our mayors in the room. So Commissioner Willie.
Here.
Commissioner Treese.
Here.
And Sheriff Fi.
Present.
Chair Harrington.
Here.
Okay, on the mayor's side, Mayor Banks, Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Cornelius Mayor Jeff Dolan.
Here.
Forest Grove Mayor Melinda Wenzel.
Here.
Tiger Mayor Heidi Lube.
Here.
Twalton Mayor Frank Boobinack.
Here.
And Sherwood Mark, Kim Rosner.
Here.
That is what we have so far. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Lacy Beatty from Beaverton, let me know she will likely be late. We do not have Mayor Jenke from Durham. We have no mayor from Gaston, we have no mayor from Hillsborough, we have no mayor from King City, we have no mayor here from North Plains, nor the mayor of Wilsonville.
Steve's in Japan. Nothing, Calloway's in Japan.
So, yes, point is, he's not here. Alrighty, so, thank you, mayors. We have received both your requests to have a meeting to discuss MISTIP as well as a letter of September 4th. So to provide us with a common understanding and to foster conversation, we have a presentation to use as a guide. So, turn it over to you, Danny.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington, commissioners, mayors. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to present with to all of you. My name's Danny Ledusma. I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators and I'm joined by my esteemed colleagues from Land Use and Transportation. We're going to try to provide as succinct as possible overview of the MISTIP program, the history, information about transportation funding, as well as some work that we're looking forward to, to share with all of you. And it's have the clicker?
We do.
As well as the county budget process and information about that, which will hopefully be enough information for you all to have a really good discussion. We're here as a resource. And we'll go ahead and turn it over to Stephen Roberts.
All right. Good afternoon. Thanks, everyone. I'm Stephen Roberts, Director of Land Use and Transportation, LUT. So we do want to move through some of these fairly quickly. I want to note that where you see the slides with the QR and the circle, that's really intended to just be a quick reference. And so there may be information that may be useful for you to go back to, but we don't want to spend a lot of time dwelling on those so we can get through the presentation and move into the discussion time. So I want to just cover a little bit of history again. I think this will be mostly repeat for many of you, but we thought it was important to just touch on for reference points. So these are just a few example projects that have been completed through the program. I live in the southeast part of the county near Tigard, but I use all of these roads, right, as I'm driving around. And I think that helps to stress the importance of having that countywide view of how we address some of our transportation needs. We're not all focused in just one area. So I'll just move through this very quickly. So you all, I think, know the history of MSTIP. We've covered this multiple times at coordinating committee meetings and other forums. And so as a result of Measure 50, the levy rate for MSTIP III that was in effect in 1997 was significantly reduced, and that amount was rolled into the county's new base property tax rate. And since then, the board has continued funding transportation projects countywide using MSTIP funds, which are subset of that general fund property tax revenues. That's a discretionary choice by the board, of course. And since 1986, going all the way back to the original MSTIP program, we've now either spent or allocated over a billion dollars, really more than $1.1 billion, in just county funding in the program over that period of time. That does not include other funds that we've leveraged using MSTIP, which might be city funds, external funds, or, you know, grant funds. We make a point, the board has made a point, to try to help ensure that the program is beneficial to all parts of the county. And so one of the proxies for that has been equalizing distribution around the different commissioner districts of the county over time. And you can see, we've done a really good job of trying to equalize those over time. I think the map just reinforces that we have seen the benefits of this program throughout the county. You can see the roads are all over the place, all cities, unincorporated areas, rural areas. And I would say the program's really been nothing short of transformational in terms of our ability to keep up with growth in the cities and, to a lesser extent, in the unincorporated areas. This is just a quick chart, and the purpose of this is really to provide a comparison. So the blue bars represent if the MSTIP program, starting back in calendar year 2009, 2010, if we assumed a 3% per year annual increase in assessed valuation over time. So you can see the blue bars are basically just increasing by 3% per year. The orange line is the actual MSTIP funding allocation that has been made into the MSTIP fund, which is our Budget Fund 362. And you'll notice there's the dip where the orange line crosses below the blue bars there. The only reason that is taking, appears that way, is that there were funds for debt service for the MSTIP Bonded Cost Sharing Project that were sequestered out of the sort of larger MSTIP allocation in those years until those bonds were just paid off last fiscal year. So if you included the money that was used for debt service, the MSTIP total allocation remains above the blue bars consistently throughout. Talk a little bit more just about transportation. So there's a whole variety of different sources for how we can fund. And we've just sort of ordered these, starting from the federal government and working our way down to the local. So we have earmarks, congressionally directed spending. We are aggressive with going after federal and state grants. We, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question now, or do you want to wait till your slide deck?
I think it's fine.
Yeah, I was just, could you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Yeah, so the 3% growth, that's just what we get, the minimum or the maximum lift on the assessed market value. But typically, it's higher than that, like in Sherwood, it'll go four, four and a half, in a really good year, 5%.
Correct.
It'd just be curious to see what that looked like if we put the actual, what we saw the increase each year.
Yeah, and that, excuse me, and that's really what the orange line represents. And again, unfortunately, because of the way the numbers are in the chart, it doesn't really reflect that the actual MSTIP allocation total, including debt service, has actually exceeded that 3% per year consistently since about 11, 12. And that, you remember, we were coming out of the Great Recession that happened in sort of 2008 to 2010. And so those first few years of this chart, we were actually at basically 3% growth per year coming out of the recession. And then you can see where it starts to, the growth in the assessed value. And thus, the MSTIP allocation grew over time faster than the minimum 3% AV increase.
Yeah, and I understand that. I was just curious what the actual increase was.
Gotcha. Yeah, yeah, we have the data. We could potentially follow up and get the sort of year-by-year increase, if that'd be like.
Thank you.
It's the AV on the general.
Correct. Okay. All right. We are all at work on a state legislative funding package. We just had the Joint Committee on Transportation Bus Tour and Roundtable and Public Carrying Friday, and so helping to try to shape the size and components of a new state transportation package. It's been eight years, and the state's been on kind of a consistent eight-year cycle of looking at big transportation funding packages. So we're right on that cycle, too. We have benefited a lot here from the regional flexible funding allocation that Metro manages. Those are mostly federal pass-through funds that get distributed through Metro. Also really important for a lot of our off-street improvements, in particular bicycle and pedestrian. We all have the opportunity to implement local gas taxes. The county has implemented a registration fee, and then, of course, cities and the county, well, cities, I think, really can adopt certain user fees. Oh, I skipped over system development charges. So the transportation development tax, that's a countywide transportation system charge. And then I know many of the cities also have supplemental system development charges for transportation and other uses. We can all do local bond measures and levies, and as well as urban renewal. And then finally, at the bottom here, the county MSTIP program. And then we had a couple of questions for you to think about, and you can follow up with us anytime. Are there other funding sources maybe that we've missed listing here? And then are there other things that you're maybe doing at the local level in terms of raising funding for transportation? And you may have seen this before, but this is sort of a breakdown of the county's transportation funding sources and uses. And so what we've done is sort of tried to color code these in a way so that the ones that are focused primarily on capital project improvements are in the sort of bluish color. What we consider county road fund, operations and maintenance-focused improvements are the green. And then the sort of salmon color, those are different funding sources that can be used for both operations and maintenance. So you see, it's really quite a varied mix of different funds. And so constitutionally, of course, we're required to spend gas taxes and vehicle user fees on things in the public road rights of way. But other sources like MSTIP obviously is very flexible, and that has really helped along the way with our on-road and off-road improvements, grants. We'd like to see that slice of the pie get bigger and bigger over time. So. And then, of course, in the county, in the unincorporated areas, we also have the Urban Road Maintenance District. So that essentially is a property tax where people are paying for street maintenance in those unincorporated areas. So this is just a little snip from our most current capital improvement plan, our countywide capital improvement plan. Surprisingly, that's a fairly new county practice to actually take a countywide look at our capital improvement needs and proposed spending over time. So this is the second iteration of it. And it really is an opportunity for the board, as decision makers, to really have the complete picture of all of the different needs that exist in the county. And so the key categories that you'll see there are facilities, transportation, information technology, and parks. And you'll notice, if you look out at the five-year total, it's a little over nearly $1.2 billion. And about 80% of that is transportation. The CIP includes about $152 million in proposed project expenditures for transportation and FY 2425. And then, again, the forecasted revenues and expenditures that we just saw rolled up in the previous slide, that helps to fund 68 projects that are under construction or in the various project development stages right now. And there's a list there of all those different kinds of projects. And as you know, the board recently made a commitment to MSTIP 3F. That's a $250 million program. With the breakdown, as you see here, one of the key components of this latest iteration is really working harder to try to make sure that we're providing funds to help leverage those outside funds. I think we have to acknowledge, we can't do it all locally. And that's ever even more true than it has been in the past. And so we're really looking to provide more funding to leverage grant opportunities. So the Opportunity Fund, you're all familiar with, went up from $7.5 million in the last cycle to 13 million this time. And then the board committed to create the large project match allocation. So there are five or six specific projects that may be eligible for large federal grants that can tap into the large project allocation. The next slide is just the list of projects. You've seen this before, and it's in your hand out there. And we're happy to reshare that if need be, but that just gives you the list of the projects that are specifically identified in the MSTIP 3F project list. And a map. So again, I think you see a good distribution. We have projects down in the south and southeast part of the county, in Beaverton, in Hillsborough, in the unincorporated area in between, Cornelius, Forest Grove, and North Plains, and at least one rural project. So again, a pretty good geographic spread here. And then the board, of course, authorized the bonding of up to $150 million earlier this year. And that is really to help complete the commitments that we made in our prior MSTIP programs. About 60 million of that, 150, is for bonding cost-sharing projects. We always knew that there would be a second round of bonding needed for that. And then $90 million actually is to help close really the unprecedented funding gaps that we saw as a result of cost escalation during the MISTIP 3D and 3E cycles over this last five-to-10-year period. And so again, the board has taken that decision to use the county's full faith and credit rating, and that will provide certainty that those projects will get completed. These are a little bit outdated, but they just give an indication of the status and anticipated completion dates for the various projects that were covered under the bonding funds here. So the bonding cost-sharing projects, you can see, we're intending to try to wrap most of those up in FY 2627. And the MSTIP 3D, 3E projects as well, looking to wrap those up, FY 2728.
On this one, the ones that would be funded through the $150 million full faith and credit bonding, are they the ones approximately where the blue lands between FY 202425 and FY 2526?
It's really going to be pretty much all of the projects that are in blue. I mean, it's money that just goes into the fund to help ensure that all of those projects will be completed.
Okay, okay. I assumed on the prior slide that the blue did not rely upon the 150, but maybe I was wrong on that.
Yeah, that's also assuring that there's adequate funds available to just complete all of those projects. Yep, that's a great clarification.
Thank you. Both of them are reliant upon that 150.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And so just a quick, yes, Mayor Rosner.
Can you go, before you go on to looking forward, just while we're still kind of reviewing, go back to the CIP slide.
This one?
Yeah, that's great.
Yep.
So I'm assuming most of the mayors would agree, we have CIPs that go out many, many years with many projects that we have no idea how we're going to pay for it, you know, and that's why you lobby and you go find grants. And I'm just curious, are these numbers just the total of what's in the CIP, or is this showing what you're actually anticipating budgeting for?
This is the total that's in the CIP, and the reason they're in the CIP is that we do have an expectation that we will find the funding or have the funding available to move those forward. And so as you pointed out, some of those you are assuming that you'll have funding for. So as we go through the annual process of updating the CIP, we'll be reviewing all of those assumptions each year just to help ensure that we don't need to make further adjustments further out.
We prioritize and find out how much we have, and we actually do what we can do. So I just want to make sure I understood the context of this slide.
Yeah, thank you.
And it's the first time we've had one.
Indeed. Right. Here. Okay, so looking forward, we want to just talk a little bit about this as well. So in LUT, we are taking on a project as one of our department goals for this upcoming fiscal year, a process to take a look at how we can improve the resilience of our county transportation project funding and using other avenues to develop a sustainable, long-term funding and financing strategy that would reduce reliance on the County General Fund. And so the tasks, you can see them listed out there. I won't try to read them all, but we definitely envision having the WCCC as a sounding board in that process. And so we'll definitely be briefing you on that process as we go and trying to seek engagement with you during the WCCC meetings coming up. So our timeline goal is really by the end of the current fiscal year in June 2025. We'd like to be able to present some draft funding plan scenarios to our board and our other partner agencies in June for consideration and discussion. And I would liken this maybe in some ways to the efforts that ODOT's currently going through right now with thinking about how they need to essentially diversify. They've got three sort of significant funding sources they rely on primarily, and needing to really just think about how to diversify that funding.
Even if I can, just to add some context, the importance of this goal, as a follow-through after the board's adoption of their strategic plan update, each of our county departments engaged in a work plan process. And so this is one of a limited number of goals that LUT will be reporting on and engaging in over the next year. Go to the next slide.
Oh, actually, this is you.
So provide just a few, a few slides about the context of our county budget process. For the board's direction, our county administrator engages in managing a county budgeting process that begins in earnest in February, and maybe a little bit before then, all the way through June. And we wanted to add this slide so you could see that there's opportunities in addition to our budget committees, where we are trying to make sure that we're transparent, and there's opportunities for the public to understand and know the deliberations that the board will take in its adoption. So there's three budget committees. There's the Washington County Service District for Washington County, as well as the Service District for Lightning Number One, the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District, and Urban Road Maintenance District, and the North Bethany County Service District for Roads. And each of those have five committee, community members on each of those committees. The board, as you know, is committed to transparency. And so there have been, in previous budgets, opportunities for public review opportunities. In fiscal year 2324, the budget process included a mayor's and city council and special district board members' review opportunity, along with a public review opportunity. And in fiscal year 2425, the budget had a new proposed budget presentation at a public meeting as well. As you all know, the county board works to balance several competing priorities. So the budget is divided into five areas of county government, where we provide services and administration, includes public safety and justice, land use and transportation, housing, health and human services, general government and culture, education and recreation. And in each of these years, over the past years, we continue to see increased needs, where we're trying to balance our general fund and how general fund helps to address each of those needs. Our general fund, as you know, grows at a rate of a 4% to 5% each year. However, of that general fund, only a small percent of that revenue is unrestricted. So our general fund pays for countywide services in the areas of elections, assessment and taxation, public safety, including our corrections, public health and long-range planning. 43% of that is dedicated. We also have some SIP revenue, but it's limited in terms of its time and duration. And that growth, like I said, is constrained, while we know that needs continue to increase well beyond a 4% to 5% increase each year. So I'll turn it back over to you to have your discussion. We're here if there's any questions.
Alrighty. Well, I just want to make sure everybody knows that since all of the budget information is available from fiscal year '09, '10 forward, and there was one year where the property tax revenue fell below that 3%. So 3% is not guaranteed from Measure 547 and 50, but rather, the voters approved a measure that said it won't increase any more than 3%, except for the new development increases. So, that being said, you all wanted to have a meeting to discuss the county budget and the nature of MISTIP. So it's taken us a little time to get all five commissioners available, but here we are. So I'll just turn it over to you.
Can we go back to the slide again for the CIP?
Sure. Slide 12.
Do you define what parks are for Washington County?
Oh, certainly.
Provided services?
We manage the park at Skoggins, Hag Lake, as well as Metzger Park. And then Eagle Landing is the other park within our portfolio. Those are real historical parks. And so we continue to manage those accordingly and work with community partners. Ms. Angie's team is actually the one that manages those.
So just one point of clarification, Metzger Park is actually operated by the county and funded fully through a local improvement district. And that's one of the changes this board made just last year, I believe, to ensure that there's no general funds subsidizing that park.
That's, we've done a lot of work in that domain to increase the knowledge and understanding of general fund subsidies.
Just one, another quick question on that. Is some TLT dollars actually going to parks, too, because of the expanding the RV park up at Hag Lake?
No, the funding for the campground and also visitor center is through a grant, and we are also securing other grant sources. Just received funding through Explore Twalton.
Explore Twalton Valley provided a grant, and we just received notification about a week or two ago that we received a grant from Oregon Parks and Rec as well.
And we are underway of a full feasibility, operating feasibility study for the campground. The direction from this board is that we should pursue all other sources of funding for the construction outside of the use of general funds.
We do still have the Bureau of Reclamation provided the initial grant. So those two grants I just mentioned go towards the local match required. That's just for the campground. We are still on the hook for the local match for the visitor center.
If, I'm looking at the numbers for 2025, 26, and 5.3 million, and I'm just kind of curious why that number is so much larger, like what's happening in that year that that part of the budget is significantly higher than the other years?
So I don't have the full detail in front of me, Mayor, but I'm assuming that's connected to the construction of the campground and also visitor center. And we're under a timeline through our grant with the BOR to the execution. We have successfully extended the timeline of the grant so that we can actively pursue other sources of funding.
So is the grant paying the 5.3 partial thing? Is general fund money going at all towards this?
There is not general fund money contemplated at this point in time in the construction of the campground or the visitor center. We are under an agreement with the BOR to make good on these funds. So if we could not pursue other sources of funding, then we may need to go back to the board and request general fund use. But our goal is to continue to pursue grants and other sources, and we've been successful to date.
So, elephant in the room, as always, is MISTIP money is being shifted from MISTIP to general fund. It's happened the last two years. The reason for the letter and for the meeting is on working, the board and the mayors working on making sure this doesn't happen again in the upcoming fiscal year. the board and the mayors working on making sure this doesn't happen again in the upcoming fiscal year. So that's why we reached out, sent out the letter about being partners in assisting the county in any way we can or providing ideas or whatever you want. So that MISTIP doesn't get touched again. Wherever counting magic that can be done, that was presented that, you know, MISTIP was only cut by point three percent. It's all counting sleight of hand. You know, in actuality, the dollars went down because the assessed value Washington County went up and to get the full assessment that it could have gotten. So we know the county's in a budget situation. We don't want to be pains in the asses, to be blunt. But we got to figure something out between, you know, the county and the cities because these MISTIP is very important to the cities. And we need these roads and the funding to be there in order for economic, you know, development and safety. And all that is, you know, wrapped up in that money. When money gets pulled out of MISTIP, we're never going to see it again. And it's more of a burden on future MISTIP projects when we're having to scramble or having to bond for it. So what can we do to set up this next fiscal year's process? I know you started January, February to sit down together because we don't want to be, you know, we were left out to the last minute. As you mentioned, the twenty-three point four process, the budget was already written, it dried, ink was dry. And we did show up and we weren't listened to. Nothing changed. So what can we do to change that this year? That's the ask.
Well, first, in terms of you weren't listened to because nothing changed. The fact of the matter is we couldn't find other sources of funding without impacting other programs that as part of the balancing act were still needed. And moving forward, I'd say for this next upcoming proposed fiscal year, we're going to be based upon the forecasts that we've received from early forecasts from our CFO. We continue to have costs that are outpacing the revenues. So that's one reason why we've chosen to pursue the one fifty bonding that provides the certainty to complete those three D and three E programs versus continuing with the pay go or pay as you go policy. And but from there for the two fifty and beyond, it continues to follow the pay as you go. One of the scenarios that the board will be discussing, Ms. Angie, in the months ahead is looking at what we might be able to do to possibly scope out having a three percent MISTIP allocation. So we're able to provide some, that level of certainty. But the bottom line is we can't make any guarantees around the, the MISTIP allocation. We'll have to cover the bond funding payments for the one fifty and then go from there. But we're having to balance the needs of all of the countywide services that are part of the county portfolio that serve the constituents throughout Washington County, which also includes residents in your cities as well. I'm really proud of the decisions that this board has been making because we have advanced a lot of areas that have been neglected. I mean, the fact that we have a first ever CIP, the fact that we have solved the problem of keeping the four countywide public safety and justice facilities in service versus closing them because of the emergency equipment failures with HVAC and roofs and, and other specifics. That we are constructing a updated CIP that will include all the deferred maintenance that has not previously been addressed as well as moving forward with the ERP. Some of these are things that you've been hearing about for me for the last couple of years, and those circumstances have not changed. We're also continuing to work on the jail and community corrections planning because we know that all of our communities are living with the realities of additional state mandates on public safety and justice at the same time that we're living with the reality of having a jail that is too small based upon the need. And then beyond that, we're going to have to get on with planning a new courthouse as well. So it's a not fun position that we're all sitting in. So in future decades, will a board of commissioners need to look at having an additional property tax revenue stream in order to address the backlog of transportation projects that may be in the mix as well? So I know a lot of that is known information. I'll turn it over to my colleagues. And I think Commissioner Willie was itching to respond first.
I don't know my itching, but now, we've, I mean, I've had conversations with many of you already about this over the last couple of years and the sanctity of MSTIP dollars. And I think from my standpoint, having to kind of back up on my mayor days when I was wholly in one hundred percent committed, such as you are, that MSTIP was to be untouched. Fortunately, during those years, the county had the financial resources to honor that. And they continued to doing that until we took over in two thousand and nineteen and discovered that there was some CIP issues that needed to be addressed. And obviously they weren't small. And so then when you start looking at that, as well as all of the impacts that each one of you have had to deal with with your cities, with inflation going up significantly higher than our tax revenues and dealing with, how do we pay for everything? That's exactly where we are. And I think you all heard me say last year when we proposed a two point five million dollar cut to MSTIP to balance our general fund. My question back to everyone was, so if you don't want to spend, if you want to maintain two and a half million dollars in MSTIP, what services do you recommend we cut? How many positions are we going to have to eliminate to make up that two and a half million dollars? And to me, it was a hard decision, but it was also, if I'm talking about ten to fifteen positions and impacting services by departments versus a two and a half million dollar project on a road, which would not be significant by any means. I had to make the decision of protecting our services. We're going to be in that again next year. And if Roy is correct in his projections, it'll probably be a couple more years that we're going to deal with continuing cuts. So it's going to be up to us to make sure that we have, remember, this is the third budget cut we've had, two twenty-five million and a ten million. That's pretty significant. And so as the analogy says, there's no meat on the bone. So the next ones are even going to be harder, harder decisions. For me personally, I welcome your input as to how we could go about doing that. And I guess encourage further dialogue. But as the chair said, I don't see how we can make a commitment to you as your letter requested that they will not be touched again because we have to make decisions and priorities.
I'd just like to add one other piece to that. Catherine and Jerry have outlined things, but I guess I also want to underscore the fact that I think we have a very progressive staff and a progressive commission in that we're looking forward to try to see what are our service levels? What can we do? How can we manage this from a thirty-five thousand foot level? So it's not, it's not just about MSTIP. It's really about the whole host of services that were, that we provide some by mandate, some not. But we are looking at what are those? Where eventually down the road are the costs associated with that? And how can we manage this? These are the tools that we didn't have coming in to this job that we're, we're trying to establish as well. So that's, that's another piece that I think is important for you to know in relationship to how do we see the future? Because that's, the future isn't just next year, as you all very well know. The future, when I'm looking at this, it's like ten years out. How are we going to manage this over the course of time?
Chair, you mentioned something about looking at a three percent MISTIP allocation. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Oh, only that it is one idea for us to look at moving forward.
So funding three, at three percent funding MISTIP?
Possibly. It's one of the various possibilities, along with cutting more staff, cutting services to the community. Yep. Another idea is we're trying to get a handle on what are the services that the state is requiring us to do? Which ones are they funding? Which ones are they only partially funding? Which ones are they not funding at all and pushing back?
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Chair, that, that critical part of the dialogue coming next spring, actually starting now, is is getting the state to stop handing this unfunded mandates. And in that case, that would, you know, take some of the strain off of our general fund. So that's certainly one of the piece of puzzle that, would you put up slide eight? So for me, I started this process several months ago. I went back to two thousand and said, what was our base MSTIP revenues in two thousand? And then I pulled that forward all the way to twenty-three, I believe, at a three percent incremental increase. So if we wanted to do kind of the letter of the law, being very nitpicky about this, if we committed to a three percent increase every year, what would we be committed to in twenty-four, twenty-five? Versus how much money did we actually contribute to MST during that period of time? And it's, it's pretty considerably different. I think my delta was four or five million dollars. This year was the delta between, if we just said three percent.
Was three point two.
Yeah. And so, again, I was, I was kind of being a little nerdy on this just to say, okay, if we, if anybody said, have you stayed with the commitment that you made for the three percent MSTIP? I could say, yeah. Was there more money committed? Yeah. But then again, I didn't want to get into, you know, the nitpicky part about that. And so to me, this graph is extremely important to see that we are exceeding that three percent criteria, even at where we are in the last couple of budget cuts. And so that was my safe harbor, I guess, if you could say that. I don't like it, but at least I can feel decent about that. Yeah.
Yeah, a couple of things. I think that graph would be more meaningful if it was actuals. Because, you know, we have seen when there's a lot of capital investment from the private sector in the county, we do see those numbers jump a little bit, just like we do in the cities. The three percent, I would, I would hazard a guess to be proven wrong that we've actually, on average, we're always over three percent.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Always.
Except for twenty-twelve.
That's a long time ago, but, but, but it's very, very rare that we're over three percent because there's always something being built unless we go into compression, which is pretty rare. But I think it's important and everybody just wanted, I know we've all talked about this, but I want to say it because this is a public meeting and I want people to hear it. But I think what's different here is this originally was a levy that was passed by the voters in Washington County to fund transportation. And when measure fifty hit, we had the opportunity to roll it into the general fund. So we wouldn't have to go out and get, get the levy renewed every year. So, but the voter's intent remains the same. This money was meant to fund transportation projects. So I think it's important that we say that out loud because when we start to use this money for other purposes, we're basically going against the voter's intent. You can say that's a long time ago, but we haven't asked the voters that question since that time. So I think it's important. I know we've talked about this, but I think it's important for the voters that might be listening to this conversation to hear about it. I also think it's, it's a great example that the culture that has built around this over the years with the WCCC, having regional, not just input, not just a review or my favorite kind of meeting, a listening session, I can't say it, but where we have county leaders, cities and county coming together to set priorities and determine what projects need to happen around the county. Because we're, we're all invested in this, right? So it's, it's been a model for how we can thoughtfully spend money in the county as opposed to, but I fear going forward and not, I think as budgets get tight, the tendency of all these different agencies, ODOT, county, metro, cities, the state is to look inward and start to control more. We need to be doing the exact opposite. When budget gets tight, we need to be looking outward and figuring out how, how can we partner better with all the different entities in the region have a stake in these transportation dollars? Because just optimizing in silos, we're not helping the county out that long term. So that's my soapbox speech. Turn it over to anyone else who wants to jump in.
So I'm going to go back to Stephen's comment on slide ten about funding sources creative ideas. I know these guys are sick of hearing about it, but while moving forward, the bond measure passed would address county roads that weren't up to snuff and state roads in the city of Tuallaton. We got that passed easily. You know, a ten year bond that all the projects are now down in five years, they're approved facilities that we haven't even owned. So what can the county do? And this is where, by ignorance here, is, is there the ability for the county to assess a gas tax? Maybe the cities here have gas tax of a penny or two. Can you do that? And to bridge that gap, you know, just small things that that would relieve the pressure on the commission by having to move money around. You have a dedicated gas tax that goes to projects like this. Is that a possibility? Geez, Roy shaking his head, yes.
I know gas tax. Can we do a countywide gas tax, including the cities? They're only unincorporated.
Unincorporated.
So we can't, we can't put a gas tax on you. Okay?
Right.
The second part to that is that the, the funding sources, I guess, that we're talking about are a variety of things. But we also have to consider that we have a library levy and we have a public safety levy. And we, we feel like we are rapidly reaching saturation.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you.
So pick and choose carefully. So do you want to give up a public safety or a library levy or a transportation initiative? And I think that's the prioritization that, again, we look at and we are moving ahead on putting those levies on the ballot in the next year or so, it's November of twenty
Five.
Five. And so right now, that's our priority. Because if we lose those and our general fund is in worse shape.
For the record, they have, the mayors have seen the board focus list that takes us out to twenty thirty. They've, they've had the benefit of understanding the big major funding problems that we have to solve, including an expanded jail and a new courthouse, let alone the deferred maintenance.
Madam Chair, I think I have a technical question that I think, how come, how can the county levy a countywide TLT but not a gas tax? What's the mechanism difference between those two things?
Because the WCCLS is a defined Washington County Service District and service levy.
I know, transient lodging tax.
I'm sorry, I thought you said library.
I meant, oh, maybe I did, but I meant transient lodging tax. How can the county levy a transient lodging tax across the entire county?
It's voter approved. It was voter approved and the voters modified it a couple of different times over the life of that.
Well, realizing, remember that the ten percent Well, realizing, remember that, uh, the 10% is kind of our share. Anything above 10% is the city's.
Oh, I'm aware.
So you get, you get raises whenever the.
I'm aware. I mean, I think it's a good thing. And I, I mean, I think.
On the city council.
When, when your predecessors didn't want that, and I'm pretty sure you were the mayor at the time. So I think that, you know, all of the cities, I think we intellectually understand, we have the same competing priorities, right? We have the same issues with public safety. We have the same issue with road money. We have the same issue with our general fund. And so, I, I mean, I listened to the meeting on the way here. I've thought considerable about the problem in front of us now. And I don't know if, if it's helpful for us to sit across the way and say, should you do this? Should you do this? Should you do this? But I think what we need is, is, I understand that we cannot ask you to promise what a future board might undo. But you guys are in your current composite for two years. So I think we have some, we can see into the future a little bit and understand where we are. And how do we, as the city that is budgeting for future projects, kind of work in this space? I think that's what we're, we're really asking is, we're, we understand you don't have easy decisions ahead of you. We don't have easy decisions ahead of us too, but we know our roads are in such disrepair. You know, I think that, that's kind of what we're looking for, is how do we operate in the next couple of years? Not in the next 20 or 30, which I understand is important in road stuff, but like our next few projects is what I'm, you know, what I'm concerned about as the mayor. This isn't even talking about maintenance. This is just about new projects.
Well, and that is why we committed to a full faith and credit, 150 million bond, and have approved the 250 million 3F list. Uh, because we've pushed the edge of the envelope that we can financially in order to provide certainty for projects that you or your predecessors have previously evangelized. Uh, so we've, we followed through, or we're now finishing the follow-through on, on the bonding. Um, uh, and are, have been and continue to push the edge of the envelope. Uh, it is very challenging year over year and will likely continue that way for another three-plus years. Uh, because the, the financial challenges are great, right? Costs are going to continue to outpace property tax revenues. We've fully subscribed our one-time revenues, some of which sunset soon, right? And then uh, we have on the horizon these other major liabilities that you've heard me describe. You've heard Commissioner Willie, and um, it's, it's at best a very uncomfortable situation. And uh, every year, our county administrator hears these competing priorities from us and does her best working with her management team to give us a balanced proposed budget. And then we work through from there. Um, but we don't know yet how we're going to get through all of this for this next fiscal year.
The city of Beaverton faces a very similar, but different problem around franchise fees. When the city council enacted our ability to issue a franchise fee for people cutting in the right away, the money goes to our general fund. And every year, uh, someone in the city, uh, even before the city manager, when it was a previous mayor, would always come with a proposal about how to spend that money. And the city council had to put some guardrails around, like, we told voters this was meant to be for transportation. This was for eroding the roads. Like you are paying this as a pass-through tax on your cable bill, on your water bill, everything that comes through the city. So the city council has to constantly reaffirm and, and carve out this money. And, and we know you can't do it in perpetuity, but perhaps some guidance from the board, if you have to dip into this fund, how is it being used? Because that's the concern of the mayors, is not necessarily, well, we're concerned it's getting tapped, but we understand the criteria you're in. So perhaps it's a, a priority conversation, the absolute last money, or if we're going to do it, it has to pay for some other kind of transportation thing. They're kind of keeping with, uh, to Mayor Rosner's point, the intent. And so I think that, I think you could probably get us going along with that more than, like carving it out to something else.
Well, so let's talk a little bit about that intent. Uh, Measure 5, because I think we have a fundamental disc, uh, a fundamental disagreement on that. Measure 5 was approved by the voters to reduce and cap their property taxes to a predictable, no more than 3%, with the exception of new construction. Okay? And as part of the subsequent legislative action that went with Measures 47 and 50, the serial levies that were in place with Measure 5, as it was just a uh, three-year serial levy of $9 million a year for a total proposed of 27 million, that's what we voters approved. Okay? So this board has followed through, this board and subsequent boards have followed through in trying to work on MISTIP distribution to the degree possible. And that's where the problem lies and has been for the last couple of years. That degree possible has been impacted. We have still been fortunate to fund right to that 3% line or a little bit more. Uh, so, but that's where we're at. We're now in a position where we tried to avoid, we did some selective service cuts this past year, much like, or as examples, no more general fund subsidy to the West Slope Library, no more general fund subsidy to Metzger Park. And so we've taken those steps going into problem-solving for this next proposed fiscal year. Um, so the only clear step we have to take forward now is to cut community services further, uh, and/or lay off staff. So um, it's, it's really hard. And that includes having, having a future vision of going to the voters to fund an expanded jail slash community correction center. So your police have the assurance that when they arrest somebody, we won't be on this continued forced release path that we've been on since 2015, every single week. Uh, and, well, it's, I don't want to go any further because you've heard it all from me before.
Besides, I'd like, uh, Mayor, just to, as um, as an example to your suggestion that we don't put, that we use any cuts to MSTIP for transportation projects. So we take MSTIP money and dedicate it to rural roads. You know, I'm pretty particular about rural roads because that's my district.
Um, three of us have a lot of rural roads in our district.
I'm, I'm talking, so I get to claim the credit. So 612 miles worth, probably some three or four miles than Roy's. I have it. Anyway, um, would that make you feel better if we said?
Uh, no, of course I would not make you feel better, but I was thinking more about like, transportation staff that benefit the entire county. Not, I mean, I take great offense to rural roads because I don't have very many of them and I don't think you should be spending my taxpayer money on it.
Well, there you go.
But I do think that there, there is a path between what you were suggesting and where I think some of us are. We understand that it takes staff to run this program. We understand that some of that stuff. And so how does this money benefit every taxpayer? And I mean, you know, you're pretty famous for spreading the peanut butter quotes around here. So um, I think what we're just looking for is, I mean, I don't know, it feels like we're at a bit of an impasse. We continue to have this conversation. I feel like the mayors are not just a fundamentally different place and maybe that's where we have to end it. I mean, I'm, I, obviously my colleagues have a lot more to say, but I mean, we're, we're in this with you. All of us are facing extreme budget challenges. And we know transportation is going to require a group effort to get it done. And so, yeah, I mean, the city of Beaverton, we had to cut funding to every community event. We no longer fund community events. We, we, we're doing it too, you know, I think so. And we went through an exercise at the city of Beaverton to redefine what essential services are. What is the city chartered to do? And I know, um, that, you know, the chair's been doing a lot of that work with you guys as well. And I think this is one of those times where when we're all in better financial situation, we get to fund a lot of passion projects or things that are maybe outside our charter, chartered responsibility. It's going to be a rough go for a lot of our residents when they realize what the county is supposed to do and what cities are supposed to do, and how do we kind of merge back to some of those places? Yep.
Can we go to uh, slide 14, please? Because one of the concerns, um, so here's 3F, and you know, we all got, came together and we picked projects. We're, we're all happy with this. The concern I have is when, so say this year, or, you know, due to budget situation, you're forced to withhold $2 million from MISTIP to the general fund. That's the ITS prep, like it's gone. And then going further, say two more years, three more man, you know, another six million, half the rural bridge allocation is gone. But as these monies are moved around, the project's going to be funded, the money's gone.
So what you're describing is the stretch out, which is exactly what has happened with MISTIP. C, 3C, 3D, and 3E.
Walton, Walton and Shorewood Road is from blue, days of blue.
And at the same time, there wasn't a CIP.
Right.
The Public Safety and Justice Countywide Facilities were not kept in service order.
I, I understand.
And all these other things, so.
I'm just worried, I, I see projects fall off this list as the money disappears. That's just the reality of it.
Well, they're probably going to fall off the list regardless because of inflation, unless something like that happens. I mean, we see that with, that's why we have to borrow 150 million dollars.
And that, that's the struggle I know you're having.
Hmm.
But you're here, we, we get community involvement going, you guys did terrific outreach and more projects should be part of MISTIP. You're people excited. The next thing we're going to go back and say, oh, yeah, by the way, it ain't happening. Because, you know, there's no money. They don't want to, they're going to say, hey, we're paying into this MISTIP fund with taxes, but the project you promised me, I know it's not today. It might be like 12, Shorewood, 10 years from now. But you, you know, where does this money go?
Do you want us to cap the 250 and we can keep everything else?
I don't know. But it's a struggle I know we're going to have is, you know, some of these things are going to fall off the radar here in the future years, in future mayors.
I understand that. And again, I think probably that's a higher probability and a larger impact of inflation that it's going to be on any cuts that we give to MSTIP for subsidizing our general fund. But we'll see how that rolls out.
Built that, then there was a contingency built in the 3F. I know not for that, for inflation and cost escalation.
Yes, that's correct.
So a little bit's in there, but.
Projects don't fall off. The capital project allocation stretches out.
I'd like to make some comments. We're, we're talking at each other. I'm not sure that we're, to your point, coming to any conclusions. And, and since I'm the shortest term, well, maybe you, you and I both combined, uh, having about three months, I had, maybe I can.
She hopes her future has, is little.
Well, I'm saying as mayor.
As mayor.
Mayor. Yeah, I'm hoping she's going to run in the election for lots of times. Let's figure out how we got here, because Tim, you started to go there and I think that's important. And um, I guess I've been around a long time. I know I have. And I knew your predecessors, 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 and I worked with them on, on, on these projects. I was here when.
Yep, 40 years is a long time.
Long time. MSTIP was, was started. And what, uh, what was the intent? And you always look at legislative intent and where we are today, why there are some disagreements and why I probably have a little different view than some others, but that's fine. We all can have our own views. Um, a- as you know, the county was in dire, you already have heard, the county was in dire need of road funding. So we went out and begged and solicited our city partners and said, what if we formed an MSTIP program? Uh, would you support us? And there was a lot of promises made, a lot. At that time, you were a little less than 50%. You're now close to 50% of the population, or maybe even a little bit more. You all agreed. And we formed a WCCC committee and that was supposed to be a, a, a combination of the city and county. And that was where all projects were going to be selected. Time has morphed. I understand things changed. Um, I had always envisioned that that would continue that way. It hasn't, but that's, again, time changes. Fast forward, one Tom Bryan, who some of you know of or have heard, and Tom was the Chair of the Revenue. He calls me up and said, I could only dial back the time. If I could go back right now, we wouldn't even have this conversation. Because Tom said, Roy, do you want this to be a permanent part of the levy? And I said, well, what's, let's look at the advantages and disadvantages. And to me, it was simply an advantage of not having to go out for a levy every three years. That was it. Talked to some of your predecessors and they all said, sounds like a good idea. Let's do it. And here's where I made a mistake, and I'll tell you all, I made the mistake. I should have said, because all of the votes were there, let's form a JPAC model for this money. The JPAC model, if you know how that works, because I know you do and you've been on it, and I think you're probably presently on it and some of you have been on it, is that it truly is a partnership. Metro can't spend any money without JPAC approval. JPAC can't without Metro approval. So here we are, and I don't even want to pick on my colleagues because they're doing the best they can for what they have confronting. But let's take, I think, Frank, your position because it's a good one. If any of you are looking only at the next year or two, with all due respect, I, I think maybe you're not looking far enough out. Because literally, this board's going to change, your positions will change. What if in 10 years, a new board says, all of this money is going to go to operating funds? Is that fair? Half of this money is yours. It was always meant to be half of yours, at least, if not more. That's my opinion. Again, I don't necessarily think they may as to agree, but we're asking you, and that's where the rub is. We've got financial issues. The $10 million that was mentioned, we're much higher than that in our deficit. If we start funding our CIP like you all are, we got a much bigger role than that. Should future boards have the ability to chip away so that maybe there's zero for MSTIP? This board, with a lot of, I, I think self-reflection, decided to commit 150 million, that's been mentioned. If that hadn't been committed, I think the future would have been even more bleak. So the real issue, philosophic issue versus money issue, is how, how do you want the relationship to work? And is the money partially your money? Ours at all, ours? Now legally, it's ours. Morally, I don't believe it is, but that's, I'm only Roy talking with a short term. Morally, I don't believe it's ours. It's just as much yours as it is ours and that we collectively spend it. But that's the elephant in the room and that's what we really need to decide. If it's our money, let's end the discussion. We'll just spend it on what we need to spend it on and thank you for your time. If it's yours and ours, which I believe it is, then how are we going to assure that beyond this board's tenure? And beyond your tenure? So th- those are really the big questions that I think need to be asked and need to be resolved.
Other commissioners?
I'd just like to make a few comments here. And uh, while I respect what happened 35 years ago, I also think any one of us around this table would not have predicted a fentanyl problem. We wouldn't have predicted the housing problem that we have. We wouldn't have predicted the homelessness problem that we have. We wouldn't have predicted the degree of inflation that we have. Roy's point about it being a partnership aside, we all have these pressures. This is not a pressure that the county feels any, any more than you do. But when we look at this, we have to look at how do, how do all of our road fundings, how do they compare with the other issues and what are our priorities? And what, when I say our priorities, what's our community's priorities? That's the way I believe we have to look at this. It's not just through the lens of, um, it's our share, it's your share, it's whatever. I think we have to look at this from what does the community need? And how can we continue? And how can we continue, continue to provide the services that we have to provide? And that's frankly where we were at the last budget session. And that's why the, the future, as I mentioned earlier about looking at our service levels, looking at where, what does it eventually down the road costs us to provide these services and where can we make appropriate cuts is integral to how we solve this problem. Because it's not the county's problem, it's not the city's problem, it's our collective problem. And it's reflected in all of our communities, whether it's urban unincorporated, whether it's rural or in your cities.
Any other commissioner comments? I guess not. Back over to you.
I think, uh, I think at the core of this, and I think this is a statewide problem. It's not just a problem between cities and the counties. It's a problem between the counties and the states and the metros and the city and the counties, any O dot, any combination you wanna throw out there. But we're all fighting with each other. We're, we're not cooperating, we're not sitting down at the table and trying to figure out how we work together. Um, I've been doing some work with a customer down in Texas and they have this cog system down there, council of governments where you have, you have twenty-four regions and they have these councils of governments that are made up by elected leaders in each of those districts that do all the transportation planning. I mean, they do it all. Um, the cog around the Dallas-Fort Worth area has a four hundred million dollar budget. You know, they can apply for HUD money, they can apply for federal dollars, but they work together. We don't do that. And I think that's a serious problem. There's, I think, I'm speaking for most of us, there's a lack of trust um, that's going on and I, I, we gotta figure out how to do a better job of working together, um, work together, prioritize these projects. Um, it, it's not just transportation. I, I have concerns around, uh, library services as well. How do we make sure that we're using our dollars to the best ability to benefit every citizen in this county? I think you mentioned that Pam, but I, I, if we went out and polled, what if we did a scientific poll right now as opposed to just hearing the people that show up to our group, our information groups and our town halls and the listening sessions? We might hear a different story from our communities about what the priorities are. So we, we've gotta figure out how to work together. And I just don't think it's happening right now.
I think we have a good sense of that actually. Mayor, in that, um, we did do a poll on library services and, um, I think it probably, truth be known, everybody just soon fund libraries and the rest of us would get what's left over. Cause the libraries are very, very highly supported. And then you look at public safety, public safety is the number one concern and issue. Uh, and they would probably take whatever's left over and then what do we got? I think more from the standpoint, and again, that's the balancing act that we are all trying to do. When you say that, um, we're not communicating and we're not working with the cities. I would suggest, how do we do that better?
Yeah, and that's why I brought up the WCCC. I thought, I think it's a model for how we can work well together. You know, in terms of how we choose our projects and how we work together as a group to choose projects. I think we could extend that model in other areas of government, frankly.
So we put the transportation model on top of public safety, health and human services, all those kinds of things, cause that's what we have to do.
Well, that's a gotcha question. Of course, I'm not gonna put.
I was gonna say, invite you to that table, Tim, you know?
But, but you know, taking care of our roads and maintenance obviously is a priority, you know? Public safety is a priority and you're right, our community loves our libraries, that's a priority. But I'm just saying, I think this last cycle and any of my fellow mayors jump in if I'm getting out over my skis, but I think we felt like we weren't, there wasn't a lot of consultation going on and how do we solve for this problem? When we didn't collaborate.
Well, I think our three biggest issues, not every city funds equally, right? Like the city of Beaverton, we, we contribute a lot more to our library than some of the other cities do. And when we look at, when we pull the library cards of who we're surfacing, it is a large number of unincorporated residents that my, my taxpayers are paying for. When we look at public safety, it's the same. It's one of the first things that get cut. And so I think there's a future conversation around minimum funding to participate because, you know, those of us that fund more end up taking on services for other people. Our, my library is one of the number one circulating libraries in the state. It ain't just Beaverton residents that are utilizing it. Um, and so I think that, you know, there's some work from the cities to do to contribute to this conversation, because I think we keep highlighting the same three things, transportation, public safety and libraries. That is where there's, we, we're not trying to take over public health. That is so clearly your domain. We really don't wanna touch it. Had that experience in twenty twenty, we're, we're solid. We don't need it. And so like maybe some future roundtable type conversations around those three categories, cause public safety is one of those ones that the cities have to contribute quite a bit. Most of us contribute out of our general fund and have, uh, police levies on top of it. So I think, um, to Mayor Rosner's point, uh, there, there's some work to do around, um, working together over these three particular topics and, and you know, uh, I'm not sure what the answer is. I don't think any of us know what the answer is, but we gotta do more together for our residents and maybe we, we pick a really easy one like public safety.
So at the risk of sounding redundant, you've already heard from me
Yeah.
that we are figuring out what data the county will be able to move forward in these three domains and in the ones you haven't listed.
Yeah.
We're gonna be very busy in twenty twenty-five.
Now, the fault of Mayor Beatty's point and what the ask is, is that when you do start spinning up this budget process in January, February, and you do have the projected.
Does, not us.
Yeah. But when that starts getting, and starts getting on your radar, let's talk again, let's be involved. We wanna be supportive. And if you're envisioning, you know, holy crap, this is why we gotta do this, then we're working with you and we, you know, we would know what's going on. And have a lot more compassion or say, hey, have you thought of this or that? And you can say, hey, you know, if that doesn't work, you know, throw some spaghetti on the wall ideas with the mayors, cause as Lacy said, we're, we're with you. And it's a matter of being early in the process versus getting it handed to the budget book. You know, when you're going through the final approval with the five residents who don't even read the book, that's three hundred fifty pages. And just, you know, I, we know how it works. It gets it, look, they don't read it. They just listen to the staff's presentations, that we'd be involved. And that, you know, that we could work together, collaborate going, okay, you're gonna say, you know, we gotta hit misstep for a million bucks. You know, where would you suggest we take it from? You know, but the, you know, let us help you versus being this different cat kinda thing.
So if I, if I could just follow up on that, um, and I'm gonna call on Tanya.
Wait, wait. Can we please go to a slide in the presentation? And we are not in a position to give direction to our county administrator today, but.
Not giving it.
Please.
Direction. I'm asking her to come up.
Hello, excuse me, as Presiding Officer, please go to slide twenty-two. As the mayors have already heard, the board is going through a process, working with our staff on multiple categories of information in advance of the February-March cycle. We don't know how those conversations will line up yet. Okay? What we do know is that by the end of April, we will get a proposed budget from the CAO, which lets the five of us know, lets everybody know at the same time, following Oregon budget law. Okay? I'm not sure. I'm a little concerned about overcommitting and under-delivering in terms of the give and take, or what about these ideas that you're describing? We may be able to get to some larger ideas. But in terms of a level of collaboration and exchange about what if, if this, then what else? We may not be able to get at that because the county administrator works pretty close right up to the last minute. So, um, I, we're hearing you loud and clear, but we've got some more work to do with Ms. Angie and all of her staff to scope out those aspects that I'd already talked to you about scoping out for readiness and going from there. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that context was clear before, um, going down any further.
When you came to the Walton Library and did that budget presentation, that was phenomenal. I mean, that, that's the kind of thing I think we're looking for, cause you know, I got to see a lot of things I never knew about and so something like that around that would be, uh, perfect to be, you know, briefed on.
Well, thanks for the feedback. Yeah.
Cause that was, that was very enlightening.
What Mayor Bubinek is referring to is one of my quarterly town halls. Uh, I've had thus far a series of three of them and the fourth one's coming up later in October.
I think what, I think what's challenging, and this is not the county problem, it's the fact that we do budgeting on the same cycle. And when you guys go right up to the line on library and other things like that has an impact to our decision-making and how we have to go. If there's a, say, three, which I wanna credit the chair, she heard us on the library this year and, uh, really helped to kind of whip the vote, because that has a massive impact toward general fund is the library versus these other long-term out, further down the road projects. But I think those are the kind of things that we're trying to, you know, our staff and us is we're trying to budget on the same timeline is challenging for us to build in when we, and our staff does the same, they go right to the line, because we're not talking about abundance. We're talking about having to cut. And so we gotta take as much time as possible to make sure we're cutting from the right areas. It's just challenging, cause we're on the same timeline.
So, so we are trying to look forward a little bit more. What we have, um, uh, learned loud and clear through this most recent long session is the state legislature thinks nothing of passing mandates that uh, are enacted as of the January of that year, let alone July. And the volume of them has steadily increased, uh, as you've seen summarized in the Public Safety and Justice White Paper. So we are, we have multiple programs in place, as said previously, to try and get some further data together. And we will keep working on pulling that data together and sharing it and partnering together in problem solving as best as we can. This is, this is us trying to practice the art of the possible on that. Yes, Commissioner Trish?
I just, I just wanted to mention that, uh, as a commission, we haven't heard from Heidi, we haven't heard from Jeff, and we haven't heard from Stephanie. And I just wanna make sure that there's room for your comments as well. Terry, we heard a little bit from you. Not that you, the rest of you aren't valuable, it's just that I'd like to hear other comments as well.
I know, we've been unusually quiet at this side of the table. Um, I, I think, you know, a lot of what the mayors have said, I definitely echo. And I think my fundamental belief is please do it with us, not to us. And just continuing to work on that relationship, because again, you know, our cities rush at the last minute or things get pulled or, or trying to figure it out, because we're trying to do the exact same thing. Um, and have that open communication. I mean, it's great to have it at the elected level, but maybe with the administrator and the city managers, right? Like maybe that conversation is going on. Um, but I, I definitely, and I, in my community particularly, you know, we talk a lot about transportation and about safety and about walkability and those sorts of things. And I have conversations with my community members, especially about the way things are funded and the different roads. And you know, I've said, you know, misstep, and this is what it is, and it's, you know, these are the things that are happening to it. And our community, my community doesn't know, and when I talk about it, they get concerned, because we work really hard to have better roads in Washington County in partnership, and I think we do a really great job and we're an example across the state. And I don't want us to lose that, because people know when they're in Washington County. They know when they're driving and they're in Washington County. This is why the development is happening over here. This is why we are bustling, because we are working together as best as we can. And my only ask is that we continue to improve upon that and get better as working as a cohesive unit, instead of the cities versus the counties.
We agree that transportation is one of the areas that is, uh, a a bright spot, just like homelessness is, and where we're trying to problem solve there as well. Um, so I'd say we're doing a pretty good job in trying to problem solve. It's the everything else that is pretty, um, overwhelming our ability to deliver and problem solve. Uh, luckily, a lot of those don't impact your budget, but they do impact our shared constituents. And, um, we're trying to minimize the level of, uh, constituent exchanges that you might have related to all things health and human services, all things countywide, public safety and justice, all things general government, like elections, assessment, taxation, records. Um, it's, it's a pretty extraordinary lift that we're working on. But yeah, you'll be hearing about it, definitely. To the degree that we're able.
The quick Google was the six hundred thousand people that we all provide service to. Right? Six hundred thousand people, that's the population for Washington County. And I think to Heidi's point, continuing to focus on how do we work together and provide those services? We thankfully don't have some of the things on our budget that you guys do. But the reactions, right? We, we have to react, and the sooner we can understand, the better we do. And I think the advent of the CIP and your ability maybe to look forward and give us some trends on where you think that might be going. It's only, it's a band, right? The further you get out, the less, the less clear every image is, right? All, all hindsight's twenty twenty. But to our point of talking about where our lanes are, understanding each other's lanes, where we're going to share the benefit, cause every action has repercussions that the county makes and we, we deal with them. The same thing if we make bad decisions, it has repercussions on the adjacent cities, county also. So just, I, I think continuing to foster, how do we work together? You know, bring us in the tent on the discussion, so we're not knocking on the outside of the tent. Um, and I appreciate that when you guys do bring us in, because, um, we're all, we're all gonna get there, no matter where the there is, together. Roy talks about the forty years, I, I think back on the forty years of, almost forty years of driving into this county and remembering the joke that TV Highway was in the eighties. You know, when I came into work and you're, you're hoping you didn't lose your vehicle in the ruts and divots and right there in front of St. Mary's. Jerry maybe remembers what, how terrible TV Highway is in front of St. Mary's. And by the time you get to Cornelius, you weren't like sure it was even paved anymore. I mean, but, uh, but those, I think that's where my focus on reflecting, having had an opportunity to work with this group for the last twenty years is, um, how do we continue to work together? How do we do that stuff? Cause I think there is quite a, it's like I talked about on Friday with the transportation, we, we can do anything that we all put our heads together. If we want to index the gas tax up a one cent and make it countywide. Right? If, if those are tools that we decide, if we reach out to our, our citizens groups and they say, yeah, these, we see what the problems are, cause that's what Cornelius did, right? We laid all the problems on the table, brought citizen groups together and said, these are the options we have. You even wanna pursue any of these? And they went after excise tax and gas tax and all that stuff. So I think us working together so that when we come to the problems, and I, I think we mentioned some of the biggest problems multiple times, right? What the state does to us, not for us. Um, I would like us to all be standing together when the governor or the president of the council or anybody is talking and we can say, no, 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 no. These are horrendous impacts. You can't take away the medical examiner and the morgue and just say, you guys take care of it now. And by the way, it's retroactive. It started in January.
A deflection policy that they promised to fully fund and.
Right. I, I think, I think we can all come together on these points and they are the eighty percent that we can all very easily work together as the unfunded mandates and, and defending ourselves against those. And I think it only looks stronger when the Washington County mayors and the county commission come together and speak to our state. I mean, we represent I mean, we represent six hundred thousand of the people of the state and say, you know, if it's doing a bad thing to us, imagine what it's doing to Moreau County, you know, Springfield, you know? We, we thankfully are not worrying about, um, will our city have an emergency room like Eugene is worrying about, right? So um I'll close on that point, right? Everybody's problem is the biggest problem if you ask them until they get to see everybody else's problems at the table. And then they're like, I'll take my little problem, go back here and just deal with it, right? But these are big joint problems, right? Everything that happens to the library or the jail. We, we all share in the benefit or the, the challenges of that. So I think just finding that possible ground to working together and that we're in the tent, so and yeah, we understand exactly where you're making that decision. We agree with that a hundred percent. Or maybe here's a little tweak, tell us if we, if we're heading in the right direction. Thanks.
Well, Pam, since you called me out, um, sorry, Stephanie. What I will say is you were talking about, we'd have to ask the voters. In banks, we just passed a school bond. And most of the voters in banks are outside of city limits in our school district and they passed it overwhelmingly. So I think when it gets down to it, if you need another source of funding, ask. As long as the messaging is behind it is good, people are willing to step up and vote yes for it.
And as long as the elected body who sponsors it is behind it.
Well, yeah, there's that too.
Yep.
So it, it's there, they are out there as other options. And I'm very excited that my one project that I can even think of that's on the MSDS is starting in November and we'll get our second stoplight in town, so.
Yay.
There you go. Just in time for a whole bunch of development that's gonna be hitting banks. So it, even though it's been on the list for a while, it's happening in time before all these houses come in, so.
I think it's also important for the board to know how much time the mayors talk about how to approach you about these topics. And I know sometimes it probably perceives as like we're heading in with pitchforks. But we really do like go through like, should we write a letter? Should we make phone calls? Should we go and testify? And there's some of us that have to back some of the other ones off the, the ledge of some of the things that we're doing. I'm only sharing that a little bit of inside the tent information with you guys because we see you as such a valued partner that we do consider how our message is coming across, how we're coming across to the chair, how we're talking to, you know, we all have our own commissioners that represent our area, but we spend a majority of the time when we're together talking about how to talk about the problems. And so this meeting was a great example of us doing that versus some of the other things that we were thinking about of reacting to. So we want you guys to know that we, we do think about and value our relationship, just the same that we do with the state. And the mayors have to play an increasingly larger role of, like you guys do with the mandates and everything else. So, you know, I think uh we're always open to understanding too, like what is the best way to approach you guys on issues that we're having? So it doesn't become a nuclear problem versus like we gotta make a friend before we need a friend. And we're all, and I'm the only one at this table that has the luxury of doing this job full-time. And everyone else is doing it on top of their jobs and everything else. I, I think a lot about that as well.
So I will um echo uh my colleagues here all the way around the table. I think the collaboration is extremely important. The communication is extremely important. We need to be able to be honest and have tough conversations and know that when we leave the room, we're all still fighting the good fight and doing what we need to do. I'm, I'm a big proponent though about the intent of misstep and it's, and it's one of those things that just hangs heavy on me because knowing what that intent was and knowing what you're, what you're, the challenges that you're going through and the needs that, that, that we have to look at serving the community. I, I get that. I totally get it. And I, and I recognize and applaud you for the hard work that you're going through and trying to get this done as well. Knowing that we're at the table is extremely important to all of us here, right? And, and I thank you for that. Um, and a, a couple of things, um, we passed a three cent gas tax in North Plains during COVID. So I think if we can do it, the county can certainly think about maybe a one cent gas tax, right? And, and we can talk to you about that. And as far as the rural roads are concerned, you know, uh Commissioner Willie, of course, I'm, I'm right there with you. I'm on your side. I'm sorry, uh, but uh we do see a lot of uh traffic coming our way. I used to work in Lake Oswego and now I work in Forest Grove. And knowing and just seeing the difference over the last eighteen years from Lake Oswego and how everyone is moving, I mean, moving west, they're moving to Western Washington County, a lot of them are, right? And so when you look at the rural roads and how we have to, you know, share that with cars, trucks, semis and farm equipment, right?
And bicycles.
And bicycles.
Lord, the bicycles.
We're two-lane roads. So, so I, I understand. You know, transportation is really important and so is homelessness and homelessness and all of that and servicing the community. But I think just knowing that, you know, we're having this conversation today where we're saying, listen, we, we're serious. We really want to be at the table with you as we look forward, right? We can't go back in time and change things. We get that. But we can change things in the future. And I think knowing that we have that opportunity today to express those thoughts and feelings to you is really important. And knowing that in the future, you know, having us at the table and being a part of these conversations is going to be equally important. Not just for the, the mayors that will be here in a year, but the new mayors that will be here in a year as well. So that's, thanks. Thank you for your time. Yeah.
Can I add one thing? Um, cause you brought up something I, I wanted to amplify a little bit. And I, I was very inspired by my counterpart in Cornelius and the, uh, the speech he gave.
Careful, careful, inspired.
There's double doors. I'll make it out of there.
But he, he made some big points about the, the metro and the urban growth boundary when it comes to transportation. And, and I think one of the reasons, at least for me, that I'm so concerned about making sure we stabilize and and actually make the mistip program more robust is we have all these outside forces acting against us in terms of transportation. We have Washington County's growing gang, gang busts, I'm sorry, Yen Hill County's growing gang busters that were moving out into the rural areas. People are moving out there because it's more affordable. But we're not, we're not planning for that. You know, if you look at the RTP that Metro does, I mean, they hate it when I say this, but it's just a glorified list of PEP projects that get pre-approved for federal funding. It's not a regional transportation plan. Um, and I, I feel like that's another area that we really need to partner on is what does transportation almost look like in fifteen, twenty, thirty years? We know where we're gonna grow. We know where the urban reserves are. We know what the patterns are right now. We're not planning for that. And one of the really bad side effects of that is when we go to DC, when there's a big boondoggle of transportation money flowing out, we don't have the projects ready. We don't know what the projects are. We don't know what it looks like. So we lose out compared to other states. So I think it's, that's part of the reason I'm concerned about misstep. It's, it's a small part of it. But we, I think we, we could do a lot of really good work together, really doing some regional planning, identifying what those big projects are. How do we connect the cities on those rural roads, right? And um make sure that this is gonna be a great place in eleven fifty years.
I respectfully still, and I, I've been where you've been and where Jerry has too. And I, we understand that you have budgets as well. I do anyway, and anyway, you're balancing me as well. But I still have not heard two things that I came here to hear from you. And one of them is what should be your role in picking MSDIP projects? And I'm gonna go out five years or ten years, but then nobody's here that would be here impacted. Should the county board just be able to ride that and say, thank you, committee, but we're gonna do what we want? So what should be your role? And in regard to the misstep money, if uh if future boards, not this board, because they've shown their commitment not to do that, were to erase all the money that they, uh erase all the funding for roads, should uh there be some kind of a conversation about that? So that you say that's not appropriate or that there should be some revenue sharing, uh because obviously your voters passed it just as much as those in, in incorporated areas. So I, 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 it's a good conversation. We've all had a nice time talking to each other, I guess. But I don't know that we're getting to the base issues at all. Maybe we have in your mind.
Your first question, this last misstep cycle, I think the cities did have a lot of in, input. I mean, I know in your region, the cities talked to each other. We knew what we wanted. We prioritized to, you know, what projects were gonna be what. I mean, other, uh, other cities did that within their districts. And then, you know, the list of projects that was presented was the list of projects that were accepted by the board. Uh, because what the WCCC, we all worked together in doing that. We had the retreat where we, you know, went around the boards and stuff like that. I think that, that's the easier question to answer, number one and number two.
Should we, should we be able?
It, it worked.
But Frank, I, I understand the family of five and I understand how you did that.
Oh yeah, but you could have overwrote it. The, the board could over, our future board could have written it. Yes.
And did.
And didn't. Yeah. I'm saying, we're talking future.
Ever.
Yeah. And, and to that point, you know, and Steve and, and Mayor Wenzel and I sat down and looked at the stuff for the west end of the Washington County that was out and what the county was, you know, we were able to prioritize, hey, this is about how much money we've got. These are a laundry list of priorities, but this is what Forest Grove needs from the, the apple. You know, this is our part of the pie, Hills Grove, Cornice, this is what we thought. And I thought that worked well and that, that's very much the, the WCC historic model of how big's the pie? How are we gonna cut it up? We come, if we all decide to serve it on the one plate, it's because we all decided that that was the one big thing that we're all gonna invest in. So we came to that table together. I, I think that's the, the easy model. I think the, the future, I'm not sure what are options. What, what kind of box can we select for the future? I would hope to see us continue moving forward with that model where we come together, look over the things. I, I mean, the, the, the rubber on the road is the three cities looked at Ren Road north of my town and said, no, out of all the things we're doing, putting a roundabout out in halfway between Terry and I was not the priority between the things on the list.
And that Terry wanted her roundabout and so she got it and you didn't.
So what we chose to do.
Is exactly what you're describing. We have an adopted misstep three F list. We have an adopted policy to fund those projects using the pay-as-you-go model. And there is no reason to doubt that those adopted policies will not be followed.
Yeah, I think it, but what I thought I heard earlier was, uh, how can you be more
guaranteed?
Advised on what it is we're doing. And what I was trying to bring up earlier with Tanya was that she comes out and gives her departments what their budget scenarios have to look like. And last year it was three, five and seven cuts.
Yep.
So that, that was the beginning information sent to the department heads. So would you like to be engaged in at least hearing that? So you know exactly where we're going, that these are the budget cuts? Would you like to know earlier what we anticipate as a, as a financial hit that we're gonna take on our general fund this year? And this is what we're gonna be trying to do. So if you guys want to have a bake food sale or something, that would be great. But I mean, i- it, that kind of information, you know, the, the slide up there shows February and March. That's the timeline early that Tanya gives the, the budget guidelines to every department. And that's public information, I'm guessing.
Yes, it is. And they've received it.
So we'd sure like to, we'd like to make sure that every one of the mayors have that information that's kind of coming to tractions. If we've got to cut another ten or fifteen million dollars out of our general fund, this is what the impact that we're communicating to our departments. And everything's on the table. And then we move from there. So, and if you have any magic formulas, we'd love to hear them.
Oh, like the chair said, I mean, once April hits and published, that's when we all look at it and maybe start looking at, you know, options and, you know, you have you have the certainty of what you're gonna have to do, knowing, okay, this is revenue, here's the, you know, here's what it's gonna cost us, what we have to do. I would say April's when we start, you know, talking again and chatting, looking at your budget, not before, because it's not published yet.
Well, I'd just say that you, you get some coming attractions.
And I think the coming attractions are good too, because by the time we get to April or May.
Yeah.
I'm having my budget committee in May. We're, we're, we're not waiting for June to, to dry the ink. But I think having that and, and, and the chair sharing that information, there are
Which she has.
A thousand things coming at all of us, but I think this is part of getting this on our city managers focus too, right?
Which they have had.
That's good. That's what I was gonna ask Tanya. She has.
The info flowing has been happening.
Right. Continuing to bring that into the, the purview of the thousand things that are coming at them. So the city managers have this on their radar because you, you, you're the full-time, the rest of us are squeezing this in between the day gigs.
Yeah, and I just.
Commissioner, oh, I just wanted to add, kind of um, um, address Commissioner Rogers' question about um, can they erase all funding for roads? I mean, is there a way to codify misstep? I mean, how can we put teeth in that a little bit so that, that, how can the board put teeth in that? So that future boards do not erase funding for misstep? And is there a way to codify that? Is there a way to make that stronger? So that even if it's, even if at the end of the day, it's one percent, two percent, three percent, whatever it is, it's still codified that this bucket of money stays as it is intended to be, which is to be directed and used for roads and transportation.
Great question. And the answer is absolutely, this board could do that. And one of the things I just got a call from our.
We already have that adopted policy. It's called Budget Policy four oh four.
To answer your question, could they put more teeth? Absolutely. And could they have put more teeth in? Absolutely. Why wasn't it done earlier? That's a great question. I got a call from our internal elected auditor and she said, how come that didn't happen? I don't have a good answer for that. We just didn't envision that there would be any real changes.
Thank you.
I just wanna just pick up a little bit more on what Mayor Dale and Mousail saying. I think, I don't think any of us wanted to get into the weeds of your budget. We, we don't want to be advising you on which departments to cut and et cetera. Um, we have enough people trying to do that in our budgets. But I do think from a, from a policy point of view, from a priority setting point of view, the kind of what's coming down the pipe, what, hearing what your early thoughts are and your priorities and being able to bounce those ideas off each other, I think would be really productive. You know, when I think about transportation, it's one of the areas that we all provide transportation services to our communities. We do capital projects, we do road maintenance, we do the whole, whole thing. I was doing some quick mental math in my head and I think the back, the majority, I think it's approaching four hundred thousand of our communities, the people live in our cities. So I think that is an area where it just naturally makes sense that we're partnering. The WCC is a great place. I'd love to see it fortified. But we should be talking to each other and we should be talking about what our priorities are and what that looks like and, and making sure we're on the same page moving forward.
So I, I want to go back to uh Mayor Beatty, um, the library thing that you said your city contributes quite a bit to the libraries in addition to the WCCLS money.
Almost double, yeah.
I have asked um the Lisa WCCLS for information on the upcoming levy for uh an analysis of how much money it costs to maintain our library services all in cities and the levy and the county. So I'm still waiting on that information. But the reason why I say that is because we can't put out this levy every year and we say, yeah, can we raise it a nickel? I don't know. What's the? And you go, well, we don't even know what the total package costs us. So how can we, how can we be making those decisions kind of in a little bit of a silo? So that's coming to tractions for me anyways, because I've asked for that. And the other thing is I don't want us to lose focus that we, uh, this MSDI program is the cat's meow of everybody in the state of Oregon. We, uh, when you listen to ODOT's presentation and they say, well, this is how much money's been spent on transportation, whatever. And there's this big graph, they say, oh, don't, that's Washington, that's Washington County right there. That they skew the whole, all the results, okay? We still have fifty million dollars budgeted per year for the next five years on transportation in our county. So let's not lose focus of that. Yep, we have budget issues and yeah, we gave it a couple million dollar haircut last year and a three million dollar haircut before that. And we'd like to see that stopped. Everybody's on board with that. Everybody's on board with that. We just don't know how exactly to do that until we get state mandates and all of that back online, okay? So we're working on it. And I can certainly understand you guys don't want to come down and spend a wonderful fifteen or twenty hours with us trying to figure out the budget. You got your own deals. I I get that. But I think I think there has been a lot of communication that maybe has gone, has stopped at the city manager level. We'll make sure that that doesn't happen. And and then feel free that this is a two way conversation. And we'd love to hear back more. Do you have any wonderful ideas? Concerns? That's here.
Anything else? I just want to make, I mean, maybe I keep making the same point, but I will try one more time here. That while I while I appreciate the concept of codifying, I think that we have to be very careful about that. Because MSTIP was voted in by the by the voters in a different time set, in a different time being. And I I think I'm just concerned that what we're seeing thirty five, forty years later is not is not exactly the same. So I would, I I just have some reservation about handcuffing future commissions, future cities about issues like that. So I'm just, I have some reservation and would want to make sure that what we're doing isn't tying ourselves to the past instead of to the future. So just my thoughts there. It doesn't mean lack of commitment, though. What that means is thinking about future boards, future councils and mayors and how they're going to operate within their funds, too.
And and to that point, Pam, I think that kind of comes around to Roy's point about like the the J pack model, right? The the metro J pack model. If we came to the table and we discussed, right? And said, hey, we all understand what this some terrible thing has happened. And we said that we agree, we this is the time to do something. Then then it's then then we're all in, we're all, we're all in front of the the same pitchforks and torches about the decision, right? It it brings the decision into everybody's hands, right? So maybe maybe there is something to that because I I had the same reservation, right? About if if you codify it hard on three percent, you're, you know, that then maybe something something terrible happens, you know? We need to do something different. We don't want to be trying to unravel that mess.
I mean, in fairness, in our other capacities where the mayors meet all the time, we bitch about metro and metro's J pack model. So I'm not here to
I'm just saying. It's it's not the model, it's the members at the table.
I also with that, but I would say we could do better than metro's models. I think there's a future. I think this conversation, what my hope is that this is the start, not the end. And that we recognize we're in a couple tough budget years. We understand that measure five and fifty is putting constraints on us and so is the state. And so I think we I I want to thank you for hosting the mayors today. This is a a first time, at least since I've been elected, we've had this kind of conversation. And I'm sure, I mean, from myself mostly, it's a bit of lamenting. We wanted you to hear kind of our struggles, just like we hear your guys' struggles. And so I think there's room for us to continue to grow. But for God's sake, let's not model anything off of metro. We can all agree with that, I'm sure, so.
Is the recording still going on?
Well, first, we need a motion to adjourn the ordinance. Say your second.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning the special board meeting, please raise your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We're hereby adjourned. Now the recording.